If I just ask anybody who's not speaking if they could just put their microphone on so we don't have any feedback. So we're gonna hold another emergency meeting tonight electronically due to the coronavirus situation. That's being broadcast on channel thirteen. The meeting's being held pursuant to the emergency meeting rule under ninety-one A, colon, two, Roman three B, and also pursuant to exec, the governor's executive order two thousand twenty oh four, section eight, and the governor's emergency order number twelve, section three. As I said, the meeting is being broadcast on channel thirteen. We've also provided a number on the agenda to the SAU offices. If anybody's having trouble hearing the meeting, it's six oh three, six five nine, five zero two zero. Also, prior to tonight, we asked if anybody had a public comment that they could please submit their number by email to the SAU office, and we would call them during non-public to hear your comments. It may be that in weeks to come, we'll have a different technology to do that, but that seemed to be the best option for this evening. Can I have a roll call vote of members present, please? This is again Mike Kennison.
Gary Swanson here.
Elizabeth McKinney.
Amy Tilton here.
Kimberly Shelton here.
Susan.
Sorry, Susan Givens present.
Okay. And one other question that we're supposed to answer is, does any of us has anybody present with us? I have nobody present. This is Mike Kennison.
I do not.
Elizabeth McKinney, I do not have anybody in the room.
Amy Tilton and alone.
Gary.
Kimberly Shelton, no one in the room.
Susan Givens alone in my office.
Okay, well, so then the first order is public comment. Susan, I don't know if we received any requests.
I will just check right now. No, no request.
Okay. There being no public comment this evening, we'll move on to the section one. There is no student representative report. There was nothing new to report tonight. So we'll move on to school board committee reports. I'll go first with a building committee update. We had a weekly update from, from the clerk of the works Greg Miles, Marles on Tuesday. Good news is that it appears that as of the end of next week, a construction will be complete in the last portion of the high school. So that means whenever this ends, we can get back in there and we'll have nice new spaces. I'm gonna see if Ekman, when they're in there, can do a, to do a video for us, because I'd like to, I'd like to see the, have everybody see those new spaces. I know we're all itching to see them. I saw them in their unfinished form, but they're pretty impressive, especially the ones on the main street side with the windows, those large windows here. It's pretty neat. So we'll work on, hopefully getting something we can post on this, on the district's website. Everything is still on budget. We're sort of reading Greg should be finalizing numbers fairly soon, but it was still under budget, not by a lot, but it's clear at this point that we will not exceed the budget. So that's a good thing to know. That is it for the building committee report. Are there other committees that have met?
I think we have not met because it's, I've been in quarantine, so I can't go anywhere.
So which one is that, Elizabeth?
Entry plan.
Okay.
This is Amy, the communication committee. I reached out to Jen Weaselquist to forward any information on the committee to me, and she's been busy at work, so she's gonna eventually get that to me, she said.
Okay.
So that's all.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Susan, anything else to report on committees?
Sorry, I'm not as nimble with my microphone on and off. It keeps disappearing at the bottom of the screen. Anyways, no, no further updates on committees.
Okay. And so the next, I need to approval of minutes. We have several minutes. The first one, the March nine, two thousand twenty sealed minutes, that was the Monday night before the election. And Kim, you weren't here either. You hadn't, you were an excused member that night. And so it's only, I guess Elizabeth and I who would approve those minutes. I've, I don't know, it's kind of an odd situation. I don't have any changes to them. So I guess therefore I'd move to approve them. And Elizabeth, if you didn't know, notice any changes, I know it's not a quorum, but we were the only ones there. Everybody else will have to abstain, but I would move to approve those minutes. I mean, I would vote to approve those minutes. This is Mike Kennison.
Elizabeth McKinney, I'll second.
Okay. And then we had the public minutes from March sixteenth, along with non-public minutes that are also sealed by motion at that point in time. Could I seek a motion to approve the minutes, both public and sealed, for March sixteenth, two thousand twenty?
I make the motion to approve minutes.
If, yeah, so that's Elizabeth McKinney made the motion.
Gary Swanson.
Gary Swanson seconds the motion. Are there any changes or observations or edits to those minutes? If none, can we go by a roll call vote? Mike Kennison votes yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, vote yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, unanimous vote. So the March sixteenth, two thousand twenty, public and non-public minutes are approved, and then we're on to the March twenty-three, twenty-three, public minutes and non-public minutes may have a motion to approve those.
Gary Swanson, so moved.
Elizabeth McKinney, second.
Are there any edits or changes? Hearing none, all those in favor, let's have a roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes.
Elizabeth, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, those minutes are approved as well. And moving on to the manifests. Let me, I have to change my screen to get the, to those.
I have it here, Mike, if you want.
Here, you wanna make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the manifest totaling one million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it. Kimberly Shelton.
Any comments or edits?
Yeah, Mike, I just thought it might be interesting for the viewers, if we broke it down quickly for them.
Sure.
Payroll is approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Accounts payable is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand, and a little over a million is going to the bond.
Okay. With that, let's do a roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Elizabeth, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, it's approved, the manifest is approved unanimously. So we're on to item C, remote learning. Susan, you wanna take it from there? Think you're muted, Susan.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
We can, yep.
Okay, great. Well, I just wanted to give you an update on our remote learning and work plan so that you would have a sense of some of the work that's been done and some of the ways that we're approaching our work that's non-teaching as well. So we've been working to get all payroll checks and all employees on direct deposit, and I'm absolutely thrilled that Teresa was able to complete that yesterday. So moving forward, all payroll checks will be processed through direct deposit. So that was one of the things that we were trying to figure out how to perhaps get down to a skinnier version of essential staff, having those be done electronically was an important part of that. So, you know, piece by piece, we're going through and trying to get our systems in, and workflows redefined so that we can, we can actually conduct some of these tasks from the home environment in case somebody should get sick and/or just to limit the number of people coming in and out of the office. So, so that was a big, big piece of our, a big checklist item that has now been eliminated. We, this week, received information from the state that we got a federal waiver that had been applied for a couple of weeks ago that will allow us to provide all children from age preschool to eighteen with breakfast and lunch for free. Previously, we could provide students on free and reduced lunch, a free meal, and we could continue to provide the general public with lunch. But this waiver allows us to just categorically provide lunch, not have to track it, and we'll get reimbursement from the federal government based on their guidelines, regardless of whether they're eligible for free meals and lunch. So that was, that was a huge win for everyone and a result of the CARE Act being approved at the federal level. So I wanted to announce that tonight. I said it in a letter that went out earlier, maybe yesterday's letter to families, you know, that, that we have that available to them. And food service employees are therefore working every day at this elementary school preparing these meals, using social distancing protocols, both in the kitchen as well as for the delivery and the pickup component. They're working in staggered hours, but between basically seven and two o'clock, Monday through Friday. And they'll continue to do that. Typically, we provide a hundred and seventy lunches and four hundred and seventy-five, or four hundred and seventy-five lunches and a hundred and seventy breakfasts every day when students are attending school within our buildings. It's less now, but it's growing in the number that we're providing through this remote lunch program. And so I just thought I'd share with you some of our counts. So on our first day of remote learning, we only served sixty lunches. But this week on Monday, we served a hundred and sixty. Tuesday, it was a hundred and seventy-one. And Wednesday and Thursday, we served a hundred and seventy-seven. And when the meals go out, they go out breakfast and lunch. So if we're providing it for a family of four, there's a package that includes, you know, lunch for four and breakfast for four. So I just thought I'd give you an update on that. I know people, you know, might have felt a little apprehensive about coming in, thinking that somehow they were taking money or food away from folks that might be needier, but that's not the situation at all. We're geared up and have plenty of food available and encourage our families to take advantage of this. One, it limits them having to go out to the grocery store, and also, as many parents are working from home and trying to help and support their kiddos with this remote learning, that it takes something off of the, off of their list of things to do by just simply being able to come between eleven and twelve and pick up food, you know, to feed everyone. So I just wanted to really give a shout out to the food service staff for the great work that they're doing. We're transitioning more and more to homestyle meals. It's a priority of mine to provide, you know, healthy nutritious homestyle meals to our families, especially now having a full belly that's got all the food components and is enriched with lots of vitamins and minerals is something that is important. Hungry kids have a difficult time learning, people that are hungry. It makes, you know, stress and anxiety levels raised, and this is one way that we can support a community and help families to better navigate this new remote situation that we find ourselves in. So that's the food department for our paraprofessional plan, of course. Yes.
Just quickly, while you're on that topic, can you remind folks once again how they participate in that? How, how you participate in the meal program?
So I've sent out in my, regularly, every couple of days, in my letters to families, I send out a link that they can just simply click on and then let us know, you know, what days they would like. It tells you what meal it would be for lunch and then what days that they would like those meals, so they can fill it out there. If it's not in the emails that I send, if you go to my blog, you'll see every, every letter that I sent with this little link that say if you wanna order lunch, you know, please click here. And then last, Mike, they can go to the website, and if they click on the banner that's going across that says COVID-nineteen remote learning, if they click on that, they'll go into a folder, and right there in the folder is the link that says, you know, I think it says food service and other support assistance, and they just click on that link and they can just scroll down and click off what it is that they would like for meals for the week. So.
Also call the SAU?
Pardon?
They also call the SAU?
Yeah, absolutely. They can call the SAU, and my assistant can hop online and fill out the form on their behalf.
That's six five nine, five zero two zero.
So that is an update on how we're providing remote services through the food service department. Our plan for paraprofessionals, of course, for the most part, you know, their work takes place in classrooms with teachers, supporting students and teachers, and with going to this remote learning model, you know, it's kind of displaced them a little bit. So the plan, work plan for them is that they will continue to work with students remotely under the direction of the teacher, going through the Google classrooms. Also, if teachers need a story read or some other resources curated, they can ask the paraprofessionals to help support them in that way. If they're not needed for those tasks, we also have some administrative things that crop up that we need support in, and, and so we have kind of a, an on-call list of paras that have volunteered to come in and are available, and so we call them. So an example of that is this week, paras have come in to help our, our grade-level teams to prepare materials and get those packets ready. They'll be here on Monday to also help hand out the packets when the parents come through the pickup line. So those are examples of how we, you know, have them on, on-call basis, come and help provide us with some support. When the technology team is needing an extra set of hands with those Chromebooks coming in, setting those up and getting the tags on them, you know, we've had some assistance from paraprofessionals in that way. When they're not doing that, so if they're, if they're not able to provide the direct support, we have a professional development lined up for them to be able to do remotely. So we'll be enhancing their skills so that when we do return together at some point, either later this year or next year, that there's, that we will have invested, you know, in building their capacity to help support classroom teachers. So, so that's the plan for them. We are.
Susan, could I interrupt for a second? I just wanna ask a question. This is Amy.
Sure.
As far as the paraprofessionals, you mentioned they're gonna work with students through Google classrooms. Are they, do they have their own devices from the district for that?
We don't have district-issued devices. Most of the paraprofessionals have devices at home, just like families, devices. What we've said is that if somebody does not and they need something, they just fill out a help desk ticket for, you know, a tech department help desk ticket, and we'll provide them with what they need to access the TV or classroom.
Through their own devices?
If they don't have a device that they can use at home.
You can.
Move one, and we, then they just have to fill out. And we'll provide one.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the paraprofessionals. The facility staff, of course, they, they will work on site. We have projects and summer cleaning and, you know, certainly in the elementary school, we're providing lunches, so they'll be doing some regular cleaning there. We have offices that still need to be cleaned, and so they'll still be providing some of that support. But because we don't have kids in, you know, we're not using gyms and things like that that they would normally clean, we're painting projects and do the summer cleaning and, you know, hard wax the floors and, and all of those other things that they would begin to do in the summertime to keep them busy. But we're gonna reduce their hours. So right now, they work from, there's shifts, various shifts that run from seven in the morning until ten at night. We're gonna reduce the hours to seven, from seven in the morning till eight o'clock. Over time, we might shrink those hours further, but we do still have some building project things going on. Junior, senior high school, and we may need to have them clean off-hours, you know, office areas and other things that are occupied during the day. So, so we're gonna reduce the hours, but, but we're gonna still continue to keep them busy. They also come down here and do disinfecting. They go down to the police station and disinfect over there. So we're being good citizens to our municipal friends on the town side, so we're keeping them busy. Of course, the spring, spring, spring season comes upon us. They can go out and do some cleaning outside and, and work in the parking lots and clean that up as well. So we'll keep them busy. We've got lots to do, but in general, you know, their, their work life looks similar to the way it has always looked. The hours for the buildings, beginning on Monday, will, and the SAU will be public-facing hours. That doesn't mean nobody's here, but when we'll be, have, you know, secretarial support in place to answer phones and emails here will be from nine until three. That doesn't, you know, and so we're gonna go to what I'm calling, you know, essential staff skinny style. So there'll be some rotation of people working from home, doing things and coming in. We'll always have the, all buildings covered, but we're gonna do it with as few staff as possible, starting on Monday. And then teachers, of course, they'll continue to actively stay online, working remotely. They are going to be meeting one day a week to do planning, to engage in professional development activity to enhance their digital learning acumen, and, and to share, you know, strategies and tips for how their, you know, you know, the things that they're learning and strategies they're using successfully with students so that we can build, you know, again, the capacity of everyone based on the lessons we've learned. So that's what teachers will be doing. And then administration, of course, is working on this calendar piece and supporting the teams, you know, providing resources, following up, you know, on students that are disengaged. So if teachers are having difficulty connecting with students and are not seeing progress, then that's turned over to the administration, and the administration then follows, follows up to see if they can't, you know, contact the family, get the kids engaged in learning and back on track. So there's, there's efforts made to make sure we don't let anyone fall through the cracks. Of course, we spend a lot of time planning. Every day we get new advice and guidance about what we're, we're supposed to be doing. Sometimes it gets a little disheartening when, you know, we get advice on, on Tuesday. We meet on Tuesday and we start to retool, and then on Thursday, we're told to do something entirely different than we were told to do on, on Tuesday, and then we have to kind of retool. So, you know, sometimes I know it's frustrating for, for everyone that we can't always provide the answers that they're seeking because things are changing so quickly that, you know, as I'm writing emails or my letter to families, something's changing and, and right underneath my feet before I can get the, the communication out. So we're doing the best we can to stay, keep everyone apprised of what's going on and know that it isn't for a lack of effort or, or consideration. It's, it's just a situation in which things are moving quickly, changing frequently, and, and we like to engage in meaningful conversations about the impact of this, of this guidance on, on, on what we're doing here. So, and to minimize the disruption to the community and to staff before we start giving them new, new information. So.
Susan, can I just interrupt going back? I just want to thank all the teachers for everything that they've done, because they're learning as we're going. Nobody's had to deal with this before, so when I see the changes coming in, but yet I see the teachers keeping up with it, I see them trying to engage students, I'm just in awe of all of them and everything that they're doing and, and the administration as well. I just wanna thank all of you for doing all of this.
Thank you very much. It is, it's, I couldn't be any prouder of our staff. I mean, everybody's being asked to do things very, very differently. I mean, everybody's being asked to do things very, very differently, get up to speed on how to use video conferencing tools and the tips and tricks of the trade. We have a digital tool, a learning toolkit that we are doing webinars on with faculty tomorrow that provides them with a lot of resources by discipline area that they can use to help enhance the learning experiences for kids. So we're really excited about that, and I know how hard teachers are working. People are working just like, you know, the administration. Teachers are also working, you know, 12-hour days. And my message to them tomorrow is, you know, the week is over. You have done a good job. Unplug. You know, because we all need to take some space in order to maintain a fresh, fresh mind so that we can, you know, continue to keep our spirits high as we move forward for this kind of longer-term remote learning environment that we're in. So, yep. Parents, you know, I sent out a survey to parents, you know, kind of touching base and seeing where they're at and shared the feedback that they had provided to faculty yesterday, last evening, so that they would, you know, get a sense of, you know, how can we better support, you know, our families and our students. And the, I think 31% of them, and this was as of last night, 395 parents had filled out the survey, and I read every single one of the comments that were written. And 31% said that there was nothing more that they would need, that things are going, you know, well. 25%, you know, expressed gratitude, felt that, you know, communication was great and liked resources that had been provided, both by teachers as well as at the administrative level. And then they had some suggestions as well, you know, for, you know, areas they could use some more support, you know, foreign language and math, you know, sometimes as we get up into the higher levels of the education, you know, not all people are as, you know, fluent in the languages or their math skills. And so sometimes that might be more difficult for parents to provide, you know, guidance and support to the kids. So that was one area that they asked if we could, you know, take a look at ways that we could provide additional support to students. Video conferencing and more face-to-face time with teachers was something else that was a theme. It wasn't, you know, you know, it wasn't like 100% of the parents responded, but I would say maybe I'm going to guess somewhere around 20%, you know, ask that, you know, we try to increase our contact time, face-to-face contact time with students. So, you know, again, we're doing a lot of work, working with staff to teach them how to use some of the tools that we have available to us. And I know moving forward that you'll see more and more of that, you know, as we're able to, again, increase our skills and, you know, develop these resources. I know that I've done, even doing a little recording of a lesson or something, I've done that in my educational life, and it takes an awful lot of work to get a good recording of a little mini lesson that you might want to give. So be patient. We hear you, and we're actively working on closing our knowledge gap in this area. So more, more to come. And it's not to say that nobody is. It's just, you know, we recognize that we need to, you know, engage more individually in a face-to-face way with our kiddos. So that was, I think, the highlights of the feedback. There were other little areas, and we're looking at all of them because even if something's at 2%, that means 2% of my families need something from me. So I don't discount the fact that in some ways, people are saying great things and having a pretty good experience. That doesn't change that some people are not. And so knowing that, you know, we will redouble our efforts to provide people with the support that they're seeking from us. And we'll, you know, find ways to improve and connect with them. So, you know, as I said, my message last night to family that we are all still waiting for some guidance from the commissioner's office on what the framework is going to be, what kinds of things they're willing to give us some latitude in, that they, you know, some waivers from some of the regulations that we have to adhere to. They're talking about an awful lot of things around, you know, the calendar. One of the things that they've said is there's, you know, that they're waiving all state assessments for the rest of the year. That superintendent's were perfectly fine with that. We thought it was a little late in announcing because that would be a very difficult thing to pull off with kids not being present in our, in our schools. It would put a lot more pressure on families and technology, and it just didn't seem to be something that would be really even beneficial. We gather data on students in a variety of different ways, and the state assessment is not, you know, you know, the only way that we're looking at student performance. So it's not a big, it's a big relief to all of us that they finally have communicated that that is off the table for the year. But there are other things that we're looking at. Time on learning is one of them. And we're waiting for guidance about what they're, they're willing to allow us to do since this is going to be a longer-term situation. So I'm asking that we meet next week, and I should have that information. We're looking at, you know, and have met with the teachers' union this earlier today about, you know, at what point do we meet the 990-hour requirement for time on learning with our kids? We count days, but it's really hours of instruction that is identified in the state law that we have to meet. So we're calculating out at what point, how many days in, would we reach the 990 so that when we get the guidance from the governor, that we can look at our calendar for the rest of the year and then make a more informed recommendation. So I won't be making any recommendations for you tonight because I don't think that, certainly the April vacation is part of that. But I would also like to be able to maybe have a three-day weekend in there to give everybody a little bit of a break since we kind of, you know, March is the month of the calendar year that we don't have typically any holidays. And so we've just gone through March. We've retooled entirely. And then April is the month you usually look forward to having, you know, a one-week break. So I would really like to be able to arrange the calendar such that we get at least one or maybe two long weekends and not have that impact when we get out of school. But in order to be able to do that, you know, we need to hear more from the commissioner. And then, you know, we'll make a recommendation, like I said, next week. So that's my update on remote learning. Any questions?
Susan, thank you for that update. I know we say it almost every meeting, but I just, I can't thank folks enough. Everybody involved in the school system, in the community, of drivers, everybody who's participating to do different things to get us through this. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just so impressed with the administrative team and the teachers, the Food Service Department. I mean, just kudos. People are just really working hard and doing really great things. So would you like me to move to the next item?
Yes, sorry. I was fumbling with my mute button. Yeah. Yeah, we're on to the job sharing issue.
Yes. So we have two teachers that are job-sharing this year, and they're asking if they can continue along with this job share for the upcoming school year. And we discussed this as an administration, and we're comfortable extending this for another year. So our recommendation is to support the request of Ms. Williamson and Ms. Rhodey to job-share for another year.
I will second that.
Do we have, did we have a motion?
Oh, I thought you said, I'm sorry.
You want to first it, Jamie?
Sure. A motion to request to support the job-share renewal of the two teachers continued for the next school year.
If there's second.
Gary Swanson, second.
Any questions or comments? If none, take a call vote. Yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Elizabeth, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, that vote is unanimous. It's approved. The next item on the agenda is item E. There's two resignations. Those are in our packet. If I may entertain a motion to accept those resignations?
Gary Swanson, so moved.
I'll second.
Elizabeth McKinney, second. I would just like to comment and thank both teachers for the time that they spent with the district and wish them well in their new endeavors. If there are any other comments, please. If none, all those in favor, by a roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, the vote's unanimous. It passes. So item F, Susan, the pay scale.
Yes, so historically, you've had a wage scale for non-certified personnel. And when the budget is approved, then the scale is updated based on the amount that was set aside in the budget. So I've just updated the wage scales to reflect the 4% partial cost of living with wage increase for the building, administrative assistants, the building and grounds staff, and the Food Service Department. The paraprofessional scale is the one that was approved at town meeting. And so it just reflects what was voted in that warrant article. So you're not voting on that again, but I just thought that I wanted to bring it forward to you and have you approve the wage scale for the upcoming school year.
Any questions?
Yeah, Susan, I was just wondering, do we know when this was last increased and by how much?
Last year, everyone got 1%. All staff except for the teachers. The teachers got a 7.33% increase, and everyone else got 1%.
So over two years, it's two and a half, which is pretty much CIP, so.
Yep.
Any other questions? If there are none, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the wage.
I move that we approve the non-certified building personnel 2020, 2021 wage scale.
I'll second it. Elizabeth McKinney?
I'll hold in favor. If there are no further comments, by a roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, it's approved unanimously, and the next item on the agenda is the hiring update. I know we have some stuff in our page and our materials that lists out the current positions to be hired.
Yes, so what you'll notice in this list is that some positions are on hold, and we've put them on hold because I don't want to be hiring staff and struggling to keep our current staff with work. So the administrative assistant, point four, at the junior, senior high school is not something we need to fill at this time. And the custodian, these are new custodial positions. They're not pre-existing, but we have a hold on those positions as well. The professional staff, we have every one of those positions at the junior, senior high school and at the elementary school have been advertised more actively in the process of conducting interviews. So yesterday, we conducted interviews for the computer science teacher, and Principal Pine will be sending a recommendation up to me, and I will do a final interview and have a nomination before you at the meeting. The music teacher has not, actually has not been posted yet. We received a letter from the music teacher, a child during the lead this year, and her husband took a position outside of the state, and so they're moving. And she attended her resignation, maybe several meetings ago, but it was before we had, or after we had advertised for these other positions. The science chemistry position is a result of the vacancy that will now be in place due to the resignation. We have a few applicants for the speech pathologists. We have not done interviews. The word-language interviews will take place next week. And I expect by the end of the week that I will have finalists coming forward from the search committee for the principalship. So I will provide you with that information when I receive it. The elementary school, we have the weekend custodial position again on hold. The head custodian, we are, we had a few really good applications for that, and so we are moving forward with interviews. If it may move forward or not, depending on how those interviews go. The second-grade teacher, we have, we have three-inch, like, folders full of applications for that. And so those, I believe those interviews are taking place next week. So we're in really good shape for the vacancies that we have right now. At the SAU office, we filled the position of administrative assistant to the business administrator, Michelle Martin-Sinco, who was working on a part-time basis temporarily during the building project, will now move into this position and work full-time effective this week. The assistant superintendent position, I will be getting an add-out hopefully next week on that. The business administrator, we should have finalists to announce by the end of this week. Executive assistant position, I am interviewing now for that position, and hopefully we'll be able to conclude that process next week and make an appointment. The facilities director has been advertised. The town is the one that's overseeing that hiring process since I have so many others. And applications have been received, and our business administrator, Dave Jack, will be representing the administration in that hiring process. The accountant, Melissa Van Sickle, will start on Monday, and very, very qualified as well. We're very excited to welcome her onto our staff. So that will mean, once we fill the business administrator position, that we will be fully staffed for the first time this year. Very, very excited about that. That's the status of those open positions.
Thank you, Susan. It sounds pretty promising, pretty busy. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Susan, I was just wondering- Yeah, Susan, I was just wondering, I know you've had a few other things going on the last few weeks, but do you happen to know what turnover numbers look like this year, year-to-date?
I don't.
Okay, yeah, I figured you probably wouldn't have it. Thank you.
Susan, I'm sorry, this is Amy. Can you repeat on the high school principal position? I didn't quite hear what you said. They're already finalists? Or not?
They, the screening committee is concluding their process and I'm hoping to have finalists to announce, you know, next week.
Wow, that was quick. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? If there are none, thank you for the summary, Susan. I guess we're going to move on to tech, the technology procurement. And there's a memo in our materials from Jason on March 24th. And Susan, you can just, could you just give us an overview or give the board and the public an overview of what that procurement does for us? I think you're on mute, Susan.
Sorry about that. As we were evaluating our needs for remote learning and how we might sustain this in the longer term, we identified the need for additional Chromebooks. And so we went out, Jason went out and tried desperately to find them. And school districts all over the country and the world are scooping them up because everybody finds themselves in the same position. He was able to locate 100 Chromebooks from one vendor that had them in stock and could ship them. And so we had to send them a purchase order immediately or they were going to give them to some other school district. So we had to execute quickly to be able to secure those devices. We weren't able to find any anywhere else. We could place an order, but the back order is anywhere from eight to 12 weeks. And of course, that doesn't help us whatsoever right now. So this is, this purchase allows us to be able to outfit the third grade with Chromebooks during our remote learning.
Susan, I just, again, I'm amazed at our staff. I can't believe that Jason was able to find them. I applaud the fact that he could do that. I, I'm still in awe that he found them. And I would think that when the governor declares a state of emergency, that sometimes we have to make decisions and on a, with what we have to deal with, right? So at that point, Jason had to make a decision, you had to make a decision, and I'm so grateful that we have those Chromebooks for the third grade because obviously they're going to be meeting them for the next 12 weeks and we didn't have time to wait 12 weeks to get it filled. So thank you, Jason.
Yes, he's doing yeoman's work.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Jason too, and I'm just, just for the sense, just for, to be thorough as a board, I would recommend that we, we had a couple policies that are applicable to this. These are extraordinary circumstances. I recommend that we waive them, which we can do under our own policies. DBJ, that's transfer appropriations, allows the superintendent under $5,000 to transfer appropriations among line items. Anything over that, the board is technically supposed to approve. And then, and we can do that tonight. And then the other one is the bidding DJE policy that I would recommend that we waive tonight under these circumstances. And I would seek a motion to waive those two policies and approve this purchase.
So moved, Elizabeth McKinney?
Gary Swanson.
If there is no further comment, I'm going to seek a roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes?
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a donation, Susan. Can you share that with us?
I know. I'll get the hang of it eventually. But our New Market Community Educational Foundation has awarded us a donation, $270 for our robotics program. And although we're not able to continue with the program, it will remain in the Student Activity Fund for next year's robotics program. So we do thank them very much for the generous donation for this and for the many other donations they've made this spring to enhance our programming.
Can I seek a motion to approve that generous donation?
I move to accept the generous donation that we received.
I'll second that. Elizabeth McKinney?
Kimberly Shelton was the primary mover.
Okay, again, thank you for that, for that donation. And by a roll call vote, Mike Kennison, yes?
Amy Tilton, yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
I'm not sure if I got cut off. Gary Swanson, yes, again.
Okay, it's approved unanimously. The next item up is nominations for certified staff. And Susan, is there a non-public component to that? Okay. And therefore I would seek a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91A colon three, Roman two, paren's small c.
Second, or excuse me, so moved, Gary Swanson.
I'll second that. Amy Tilton?
And let's, let's do a roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes?
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, we're in non-public at 5:56 PM. Joanne, do you mind, I see you on there. Can you go out of the chambers, please, so to speak?
Absolutely. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Take care.
I think we have to have Tim go out as well.
Yeah, Tim, are you off?
I can send another invite and we can join another, another meeting and then come back to this one if you'd like.
We could do that, I just, this.
Is Tim just recording it, Mike? He might not even be, but we have to make sure the recording's off.
Right.
He's not here tonight. He's recording from his home, so I can't, I can't communicate with him easily.
Susan, we still might want, we might want to move to another room. And Mike, you too, because I think people can still hear our audio.
Let's, let's do that. Susan, do you want to send another invite just for the board?
Yes, I'll give you the invite and, and then we can come back to this one.
Okay.
So I, yep.
So everybody log out of the existing one, please.
I know. I know. I'll get the hang of it eventually. I'll get the hang of it eventually. But our New Market Community Educational Foundation has awarded us a donation, $270 But our New Market Community Educational Foundation has awarded us a donation, $270 for our robotics program. for our robotics program. And although we're not able to continue with the program, it will remain in the Student And although we're not able to continue with the program, it will remain in the Student
All right, well, I'll proceed that. So we're back in at 6:32 in the public session. I entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's nomination for non-certified staff.
So moved Elizabeth McKinney.
Second Gary Swanson.
Are there any other comment or questions? Here, by roll call vote, Mike Kennison, yes?
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
And I got a, I, let me see. Kim can't hear anything.
Kim, can you get on and say yes?
Or, or.
You can't just type in the chat, chat.
Chat, yes. But she, she couldn't have heard the motion, so we have enough for a quorum.
Can you hear now, Kim?
All right. Well, that's okay. We have enough for a quorum anyways. And Kim can maybe weigh in at the next meeting, but help me, I'm losing it. Do, who made the motion? Who seconded?
Elizabeth made it. I seconded.
Okay.
I think we all voted.
Yep. And so by four.
We already voted on that, too.
Yeah, we have a vote of four people in favor, so it passes. And Kim Shelton can't hear us right now due to technical problems. I have no, I can think of no other business tonight, Susan.
Other than if we can talk about when we might be able to schedule a meeting for next week.
Okay. What's your preference?
Let's see. Just give me one second. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I, I mean, I can Tuesday or Wednesday at the same time, if that works for you all. Either of those two days work.
This is Amy. It will work for me, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Gary, either works.
Either works for me, too. I'm waiting to hear from Kim. I'm trying to text her.
Yeah, that, that works for me. Does that give you enough time, Susan?
Well, why don't we be safe and say Wednesday? Just, I'd rather have the extra day knowing how things have gone. So Wednesday, if that works for everyone.
Kim can do either.
Kim can do either? Okay.
Yep.
So great. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll, Wednesday, next Wednesday at five will be our, another meeting of the board and we'll on all likelihood, hold it in the same format and we'll have, we'll get an agenda out in advance. If there's no other business, I'd seek a motion to adjourn.
Gary, so moved.
In a second.
Elizabeth, second.
And Mike Kennison, yes?
Gary Swanson, yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
And that's good enough. So we'll catch everybody next Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.